Okay, Mike Allison's on, so we'll have her do the roll and stuff. Allison is on.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
There you go.
Okay, I'm gonna call a special meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, August 24th, 2021 at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber, as well as via Zoom teleconference. The prayer will be offered by Deputy City Clerk Allison Waite, and Alderman Lopez will lead us in the Pledge to the Flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens, and so help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Joined by Zoom, please refer to the agenda or the website for the meeting link and telephone number. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please indicate if participating via Zoom state why you are not meeting in person and whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law.
All right, Alderman O'Brien.
I'm present.
Alderman Cleve.
I am here and in the chamber.
Alderman Kelly. Alderman Dowd. Alderman Karen. Alderman Clemmons. Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Tenza.
Present.
Alderwoman Lou. Alderman Jettie. Alderman Schmidt.
I am here.
Alderman Laws. Alderman Cleaver.
Present.
Alderman Harriet Gaffray.
Present.
And Alderman Wiltshire.
I am here.
All right, you have eight in attendance.
Thank you. Also in attendance is Mayor Donches. Communications.
Communications from Lori Wiltshire, President Board of Aldermen regarding calling a special Board of Aldermen meeting relative to Resolution R. 21-157 authorizing the City of Nashua to enter into a memorandum of understanding regarding the Bronstein redevelopment.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file.
Communication from Mayor Jim Donches regarding construction for Phase Two of the pump station upgrade project in the amount not to exceed $5,335,200 funded from accounts SRF loan slash 81700 infrastructure improvements.
Alderman Gaffray.
Madam President, I motion to accept, place on file, and approve the contract with DeFolies Corporation of Drackett, Mass. in amount not to exceed $5,335,200 for construction of the pump station upgrades Phase Two project. Funding will be through Department 169 Waste Water Fund, SURF loan, activity pump station upgrades Phase Two by roll call.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Dowd. Alderman Karen. Alderman Clemmons. Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Did we have a chance to ask questions on this?
We did not have a discussion on this.
Did we mean to offer it up for...
Did you want to ask something?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, is this the same item that was tabled at the last regular board meeting?
This is the full contract. I think what we voted on last meeting was just a part of this contract. Is that...
What we tabled...
Do you recall?
I don't recall exactly what was tabled at the last meeting, but I think this is something different. This is a contract for the construction of... although Dave Boucher, who's the superintendent, is on here. It's for the construction of seven... reconstruction of seven pump stations.
Did you want to ask Mr. Boucher any questions?
No, I wanted to know for certain whether it was the item that was tabled at the last full board meeting, because if it was, wouldn't we need to remove it from the table at a regular board meeting?
The mayor said... Mr. Boucher, do you know if that's the case? Is this something...
Uh, no, I'm not sure. I'm looking through my notes. I'm not sure if this was the one that was tabled at the last meeting.
Okay. Alderman Cleve.
I know I had a lot of items on the last meeting.
The one that was tabled at the last meeting was the construction for Phase Two of the pump station upgrade project in the amount not to exceed, and it's... just trying to look real quickly here, it is the same exact amount, but the reason why we tabled it was because we believed that it was 200, and the actual amount for that particular thing was only 200 and... I'm trying to find that here. So I think that's why we tabled that particular one, because it was like 232,000. So if I can just quickly find it.
We never got clarification on... we never got any... anything rectifying that curious situation from the last board meeting, correct?
I don't believe that we've gotten anything since then, but this particular one was for the Phase Two, and it was, and I apologize, I'm trying to find the item, because it was... It was the third item from the last, in the finance. I have the finance package here.
Well, this is pretty straightforward. It's for the construction of the 13 pump stations at the bid deal, and the low bid...
I'm sorry, not to me.
Five million 335,000 for the reconstruction.
Alderman O'Brien.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Since it seems to be a question... well, I have a parliamentary inquiry. Since it seems to be a question that this was tabled, would I be correct to assume the proper motion going forward would be to remove it from the table and thus enable us to have a discussion on the current motion?
I guess we could do that.
Okay. Then, Madam President, if I may, can I make the motion to remove this particular motion from the table?
Motion is to take from the table the communication from Mayor Donches regarding the Phase Two of the pump station upgrade projects. Alderwoman Lou?
Wouldn't that usually be done at a regularly scheduled regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen and not at a special meeting that's called?
We can do this at this meeting.
Motion is...
I apologize. I do have the original letter from David Boucher. It says, "To approve the contract with Wright Pierce of Thompson, Maine, in an amount not to exceed 427,600 for the construction administration service of pump station upgrades Phase Two project. Funding will be through." I thought, I think that's what one of the issues that we talked about was that this was a smaller amount, and...
That was a part of this project, Mr. Boucher, that 427,000?
That is correct. That's for engineering oversight. We hired an engineer to help oversee the whole project. Wright Pierce is the engineer. That is for the 427,600. It's part of this project, but we're contracting them separately from the construction company.
Okay. Alderman Tenza.
So, Madam President, if I may, I know there's a record of this, so my understanding in the memo we have for us tonight from the mayor is the same July 28th memo. The issue that we had was that there was a, I think in the agenda, a... just a mistake as to the total amount, which Alderman Lou brought up at that time, the 426,000 or so, which was a discrepancy, but the... what's been presented to the Finance Committee, my understanding, has not changed at all. The mayor's memo has not changed. It was just a discrepancy in the agenda that was put out. So I think that was the only... that's the reason that we tabled it last time. We've made that correction, but everything is the same.
Motion is to take that from the... the communication from the table. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Dowd. Alderman Karen. Alderman Clemmons. Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
No.
Alderman Jettie. Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws. Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gaffray.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have eight yays and one nay.
And that is taken from the table. Alderman Gaffray, would you make your motion once again?
Okay. Can I just ask a question? I can make this motion.
Same motion.
Same motion. Okay. All right, Madam President, I motion to accept and place on file and approve the contract with DeFolies Corporation of Drackett, Mass. in an amount not to exceed $5,335,200 for construction of the pump station upgrades Phase Two project. Funding will be through Department 169 Waste Water Fund, SURF loan, activity pump station upgrades Phase Two by roll call.
Heard the motion. Further discussion on that motion?
I just have a question.
Alderman Harriet Gaffray.
So, we took the other one off the table, right?
No, we took this one off the table.
This one wasn't on the table. This is the new one. This is the amended with the letter explaining. He asked to take the one off the table. I had two different figures. Am I correct?
No.
But this one's not on it. Okay, I am confused.
Alderman, please.
Thank you. I think the confusion was in our agenda, it showed the amount of the 427,600, which was, as Mr. Boucher had pointed out, was one of the things that we had talked about at the Finance Committee that night. We also discussed the 500... I mean, 5,335,200, and because it was over a million dollars, I believe the mayor at that point pointed out that it had to come for the full board for discussion, but what it went to, and Alderwoman Lou stupidly had pointed out, that what it said on our agenda was different. So we read that motion. We read the motion of 427,600 versus 5,335,200. So that's why we tabled it, was to get the clarification, and I think that's what's happening now, is we're getting the clarification that the one that we spoke of, the 427,600, was incorrect and should have read 5 million. That's my point. So I know what you're saying, is that we tabled the 427,000, but that particular one has been corrected to read 5,335,200. So...
Mayor.
That's the way it should be read.
Alderwoman Lou.
With all respect, I just want to suggest, we tabled a motion that was made, and the motion that was made was the wrong motion, I think, is what Alderman Gaffray is saying. Am I right?
Yes. And...
So to simply pull it off the table and then say, yeah, now we're gonna vote on it, it was wrong to begin with. So I don't know. Do what you want to do, whatever.
What we should vote on is the 5 million... 335,200.
Right. That's what's before us tonight.
Okay.
Any further question, any further discussion on the motion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Dowd. Alderman Karen. Alderman Clemmons. Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
No.
Alderman Jettie. Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez. Or Alderman Laws, excuse me. Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gaffray.
Yes.
And Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have eight yays and one nay.
And that motion carries.
Communication from Lori Wiltshire, President Board of Aldermen regarding calling a special Board of Aldermen meeting on Wednesday, September 8th, 2021 at 7:00 PM to discuss the American Recovery Program Act, ARPA.
Okay, I guess I would need to... there being no objection, I need to suspend the rules to allow for a communication that was received after the agenda was prepared, and that's that communication that the clerk just read. Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of R. 21-157 authorizing the City of Nashua to enter into a memorandum of understanding regarding the Bronstein redevelopment.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion for final passage of R. 21-157 by roll call, and may I speak to my amendment, please?
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. Since my time on the board, I understand, this is the first time, I should say, that I have seen a project of this magnitude to help out people who have need with housing for our city. If we are going to be a city that's going to grow in the future, we need to have affordable housing. Why affordable housing? That means we have people available, they'll be able to be in the workforce, they will be able to contribute, and I think this is a part of the puzzle, a part of the step as we move forward. We're going from currently, I think, and Mr. Cummings, correct me if I'm wrong, I see you're online, but we're going from roughly around 40 units to approximately 150. It... this will be such a product that I think would greatly assist the citizens who find a difficulty and need assistance for substantial living within our city. Thank you, Madam President.
Anyone else? Alderman Lopez.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind my fellow Aldermen and anybody in development, where in looking at particularly how to best help the city, this is, we're playing catch-up. And the Housing Authority did a lot of work to make this happen and a lot of work to push this forward, and as Alderman O'Brien has pointed out, it doesn't happen anywhere near often enough. This is not going to solve problems in our city or surrounding homelessness or housing stability, housing equality. It's, we're still playing catch-up in many, many ways in this city. There's a lot of people who are looking for housing at a decent rate. There's a lot of families that can't find a size apartment for what their needs are, and the Housing Authority is doing a tremendous amount of work to address that, which is very encouraging, and I think we need to continue supporting these kind of efforts.
I agree with you, Alderman Lopez. I think we need to support them, and they're willing to put in the hard work and bring this project to fruition, so I'm very pleased about that. Thank you. Anyone else? Motion before us is to authorize the City of Nashua to enter into a memorandum of understanding regarding the Bronstein development. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gaffray.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have nine yays and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Resolution 21-157 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances. There being no objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for second readings of ordinances, ordinance 21-069 and ordinance 21-170.
Second reading of O. 21-069, removing the one-hour parking time limit on the south side of Myrtle Street.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage.
You heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Alderman O'Brien.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Just to rebrief members of the committee, Myrtle Street runs in the area of the Bronstein development that were currently discussed previously. So by doing this, this will allow for the shovels to start getting into the ground, so it's part of the coming together of this project. So it goes hand in hand. Thank you, Madam President.
Further discussion? Alderwoman Cleve.
Just one quick question. If I remember the discussion, was this a permanent change or just a temporary change?
Alderman Lopez.
Thank you. It's a temporary change until they start construction because of where the sightlines are.
That's what I thought. Thank you so much.
Further discussion on ordinance 21-069? Alderwoman Lou.
Couple things. Why are we voting on parking before we review the parking study?
Because this is a huge development and they need parking for their residents?
Isn't this on street...
They can't make this project work.
Isn't this on street parking?
I'm sorry?
Isn't this on street parking? You know what, to be honest, I didn't see it all because it's not on the agenda.
President Wiltshire, I might be a little more...
Alderman Lopez.
So Myrtle Street is on the back of Bronstein. I had thought you were present for that, but maybe I was mistaken and you weren't in the meeting, but we actually did talk about this right in front of the very large parking study presentation, and this street is actually gonna be changed significantly by the project, but right now they need to use it for the project. But it's the street behind Bronstein.
I see. Is it dedicated parking? Is that what you're saying?
That's essentially what it's gonna become, while they're taking the parking lot, turning the parking lot into a building.
That's fine. You know, I don't like asking these questions, but I just don't see it on my agenda. Um, it's on the website.
Oh.
But, um...
Online.
Regardless, uh, I don't know what to say. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Lopez.
I do appreciate the point being made about us having a on-street parking study, but I would also say that my opinion is 180% different from Alderman Lou's, because I think that that parking study has stalled two petitions for streets that really need on-street parking, where a lot of residents have expressed a desire for that. I think that the Infrastructure Committee asked for the study and is doing its due diligence, but I also think that what was presented at the Infrastructure Committee as a parking study is far from a perfect ordinance or proposal or suggestion. It does seem to agree with the idea that there should be local requests for on-street parking, and that neighbors should be able to get together and approach their representatives and move that forward. But the neighbors particularly who need the on-street parking in the city are from two wards, mostly mine. They did get together, they did ask me, and I got stalled in committee. And that committee asked for a parking study, which, given the complexities that were presented to it and some of the fundamentally different ways that they want us to do things, at best is not gonna happen for months and probably would not happen before the end of my term. So if this is the only opportunity I have to get on-street overnight parking approved anywhere, I'm gonna take it, but I'm not satisfied with just this project. I do think there's a lot more immediate steps that should be taken, because while we were doing these studies and while we were evaluating whether the entire City of Nashua needed the same policy for on-street overnight parking versus the streets that were asking for it, these people have not been able to park in front of their homes. They've had to park in the garage in a best-case scenario during winters or overnights when they may have to get up in the morning to get to their cars and work, and this is a frequent complaint that I hear. So some wards are gonna be affected much more immediately by this than other wards, and that's why originally I believed we should have just moved forward with the petitions as long as they were approved by DPW, the police, and the fire, as we had been doing in previous years and in previous sessions.
Alderwoman Lou.
I just want to point out that we've been sitting on this completed study for six weeks or so now. It's, I don't know how long it is, but we've approved longer $5 million contracts. The end product of this, of this study was that they suggest we consider neighborhood by neighborhood agreements. I just am not happy that we, we have a study, we've had a study completed for quite a while, but we're doing this piecemeal. That's all. Thank you.
This, I don't feel this...
We didn't sit on that.
Parking is piecemeal.
It was at the Infrastructure Committee two weeks ago.
Excuse me, excuse me. I was speaking. Thank you. This piece of legislation is specific to this project. This legislation is gonna help this project get off the ground. We all know how important affordable housing is in Nashua and how much we've longed to get that development in that area built up and, you know, good-looking and safe and all of those things that we need, affordable. So this isn't piecemealing it. This is specific to a project that we really need to move forward. Alderman Lopez.
Uh, my apologies to you, Madam President. I didn't mean to overspeak you, but I felt like that response was directed at me, and I believe that we are now conflating two different projects, but the on-street overnight parking, we have not set on that. The parking study did finally get completed, and we immediately had a presentation in front of the Infrastructure Committee. I do think we need to move more rapidly on it, but that's not the same as the project in Bronstein and the development that we're talking about, which is actually what's before the board right now.
Correct. Anyone else? Alderwoman Lou.
I just wanted to offer that I, I wasn't aware that this was part of the Bronstein agreement, and I may have been, it may have been easier if I had seen it on the agenda. Thank you.
Anyone else?
If I may, Madam President.
Director Cummings.
Yes, thank you. For the record, Tim Cummings, Director of Economic Development. Just want to add a few points here this evening, because I think some of my comments may add some clarity. First, the reason why we're here is because a site plan was approved. I'm not gonna go as far as to say it was a scrivener's error, but essentially, we realized rather late in the game that the site plan approved by the planning board had, from a surveying perspective, bled over into the public right-of-way, an encroachment of approximately three feet on the 44-ish or 43-ish parking spaces. And so what we're talking about is three feet of essentially eight-to-nine-foot parking space that we need to basically memorialize in some sort of fashion so the development can proceed, and the financiers of the project will be issuing substantial amount of money, you know, in the order of, you know, $50 million, has a comfort level that we, you know, they have the adequate parking and have the rights to it. So really, we're here just, just from a housekeeping perspective. The two ordinance are companion pieces to the resolution that this body just adopted. R. 21-157 in paragraph four specifically outlines that the parking ordinances for Myrtle Street would need to change. And so the two companion pieces, O. 21-069 eliminates the one-hour parking, and then O. 21-70 allows for the overnight parking, and it essentially just stays true to what you just approved in the resolution that preceded this discussion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Director Cummings. Alderman Cleve.
Thank you, Madam President. Alderwoman Lou, if you do look online, you're absolutely correct. These two items are not on the online agenda. They are on the agenda that was sent to us. Both of those were in there, but as Director Cummings did speak to, both of these items are talked about in the memorandum of agreement, the MOU. Both of these items, and they were talked about at the Infrastructure Committee, but you're right, on the online one, these two aren't there because they were being, I believe if I have this correct, because we suspended the rules to bring these in. Am I correct, Madam President?
You are.
So that's why they're not on the agenda, because we suspended the rules to bring them in, these two items, but they are on the agenda that was sent to us.
Okay, thank you.
Need for... Alderwoman Lou.
Just to be transparent... Just, um, to be, uh, transparent, um, I'm sure, like all of you, my email has been, uh, upgraded and, uh, changed frequently in the last, uh, four months. I've had mine done a couple of times, and what I noticed, uh, is that attachments used to all show when I opened my email. Now, there's a little carrot mark that you have to hit, and I've discovered that just this afternoon. I didn't notice it on this particular, um, email, but, um, thank, thank you.
I, I, I can relate to that. I completely understand. A lot of mine is going to the Mimecast.
Okay, the motion be- The motion before us is, um, for final passage of ordinance 21-69. Is there further discussion on that? I don't think we need a roll call, 'cause we're all here. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That motion carries.
Second reading of O. 21-070, allowing permitted overnight parking on Myrtle Street.
Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for a final passage of ordinance 21-070.
Motion is for final passage of ordinance 21-070. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none with, uh, seeing none, any, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That motion carries. Ordinance 20, 21-070 is declared duly adopted. Period for general public comment? Seeing none, remarks by members of the Board. Alderwoman Lou.
Um, I would just like to, um, to bring the Board's attention to, uh, I find that, um, there are, there's a lot of, uh, comments being circulated, not directly, but on certain, uh, Nashua city politic, uh, Facebook pages, and I just want to, um, deny that I ever, um, said that, said anything negative about our, uh, city clerk. What I did say is that I don't believe the comment that was made at a public hearing regarding, um, hiring policies was an insult to the city clerk. And I just, uh, I, I know that the person who's, um, repeatedly, uh, speaking about me on Facebook, um, is a good friend of many, uh, people on the Board as well. And I, I just want to be certain that, uh, you know, I just want to stand up for myself and say, I did not insult the city clerk. I s, I felt that the statement that was made in public, uh, in a public hearing was not an insult to that person. And I, I really feel strongly that in public hearings or public hearings, uh, we should be conservative as to when we're calling people out on, um, what they say because people go there to express their opinion, and this person made it clear that it was not personal. And, um, yeah, I just want to make that point. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
Uh, I just wanted to state my opinion that I don't believe comments that are made on social media should be considered an insult because people are talking about them on social media. They can throw words out all they want, and that doesn't necessarily mean that they're present for the events. And if you're gonna say that people in public comment should be allowed to voice their opinions in, in public, then you can't really, at the same time, say people in, on social media shouldn't because there's no way we can control that.
May I respond?
Alderwoman Lou.
Alderman Lopez, I wasn't saying that, that Ms. Prince couldn't say something. I was saying, I want to make it clear that I firmly believe what I said was not an insult to the city clerk. Anyone can say whatever they want, but I wanted to point out that I never insulted the city clerk.
And I would only respond, I never insulted you. I just stated my opinion.
Well, I thought you had stated that I really shouldn't be saying that because anyone can say-
No, I stated with my opinion.
Okay, can we take this offline, please? Alderwoman Lou, I'm gonna allow you a little leeway, but not much.
Okay.
This doesn't need to happen in here.
I'm not sure what you mean by that, but if I don't talk in here, then I don't talk to you, or I don't get responses, so, thank you.
I'd be asking for a motion to adjourn.
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the August 24th, 2021 special meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned.
You've heard the motion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, everyone.